Good evening. We welcome you here tonight. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We will, oh, let's see. We have all council members in attendance. So with that then, we have our opening ceremony from Councilmember Lars North.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise with me and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, I'm having a little technology problem here and something keeps ringing. I turned off my cell phone and it still doesn't, so I don't know. And my next one would be to turn off my computer. For the days of paper and pencil. Well, let's see, we have some special recognitions tonight. Of course, we have here tonight Representative Elizabeth White. And appreciate you being here. You're welcome during our public comment period to make any comments. We also have a scout group here. And I think they're prepped, they're from, Karen, they're from over in your district. Over by the shop building area. So if you're ready, why come on up here and tell us what you're working on. What are you working on?
I am working on a merit badge.
Which one?
I'm working on a relationship with the community.
That's the one, that poster one. Okay, just a second, I'm gonna turn something off, which is unfortunate because... Shut it down. Staff will look at that problem right after the meeting, somebody. Or maybe I ought to ask you, because you probably know how to make them. Okay, what's your troop number?
Two, seven, five, eight.
Okay, and your schools you attend?
Arthurson.
Arthurson, okay, great. Well, welcome, enjoy the meeting tonight. We have quite a bit of stuff, so it's a little unusual, so, thank you. We go to our minutes of November 12th, to the council for a motion.
Move for approval of the minutes of November 12th?
Second. My phone works when it's turned on. I apologize, this is going to be a little disruptive until someone can figure out what's wrong.
You want me to go just drop it off in your office?
Which is it? It's coming from your pocket. Don?
Yeah.
Steve was saying, maybe you... Maybe it's me, or Dom. All this time it's been Dom? Not me. Dom or Tom, one of them. Technology won't get the best of me, we'll just send it out to be part of it. It's over this way, bring it back then. Oh, did it ring? Did you hear a noise on it out there?
To be honest, I wasn't paying attention, but I don't think it was...
It's a great gag, whatever it is. So it can't be mine, since mine without a "ah-ha"? Technology's getting the best of me. So, I think we had a motion on the minutes, in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of November 12th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I don't have that ring online. Passed unanimously, the minutes are approved. We now go through our public comment period. Ooh, we have quite a few people who have signed up to speak. And so, there are, it looks like a couple of new people, but we would mention a couple of general guidelines, maximum five minutes, you can take less if you want. You speak only to the mayor for decorum's purpose. What else? Oh, a total of 30 minutes, yeah, because we've got two, four, six here, so if you all... If you all take that, why... We'll be just fine. Someone leave a phone ring? This is gonna be the most interesting council meeting I've ever attended. We just have this phone ringing. No one can figure out where it is, but I know it's not mine. Actually, I'm going to just go check on that while we're having public comment. I'm gonna turn to Mayor Pro Tem Buhler to go ahead and conduct the public comment period, and I'll be right back.
Is the list...
Hold the list. First, we have Josh Cameron.
Am I only supposed to look at you again? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pro Tem Mayor, thank you for your time. So I'm here to speak about House Bill 411. I come to you in my best Dee Schneider impersonation, pretty much to kind of show this kind of a no-brainer. And really not so much, there's a morality argument for sure when it comes to climate change. There's a security argument, even national security argument. But specifically, there's a free market argument. The idea that there are customers saying that I want to buy clean energy and the market says no is a failure. That's kind of incongruent with Utah values. I think that we are pretty business friendly, we try to tap into the pulse. And this is a real business opportunity to be able to tap into green energy, tap into a customer market that's already there before the product is really even pushed on a wide scale. And then use that push to help with funding and national awareness, to help with getting subsidies through maybe federal funding, to use what Elon Musk has even shown, a small obscure corner of Utah, to potentially fund or fuel the entire U.S., or at least just Utah's needs. Hopefully, we can carve out nuances where we're also getting, you know, West Valley citizens, you know, hired and getting some of that tax revenue, some of the benefits that come with creating jobs, where there's 10 times the amount of jobs in green energy. So there's all these things that match up, business friendly, 10 times the amount of jobs. There's already a customer base there, it's a morality argument. We're a pretty morally centered state here. And so I'd really urge you to consider HB 411, which is effectively getting onto 100% green energy by 2030. And like the idea that, like, no, we can't, like, when has America ever stood for, no, we can't, right? And so I think there's aspirations, and if we fail, like, so we get to 2035, right? We should still at least push for something. And then if we decide by 2030 it's not possible, then we can figure that out. But the idea that we can't is pretty un-American. As a veteran who's fought in wars, I have an idea of some of the turmoil and some of the strife that an average person kind of has to go through. I even worked in the oil fields in Vernal, lost my job, understanding much of the strife again of the volatile system that we currently have. And so outside of the pollution argument, you know, we've lost thousands of jobs in Vernal alone. And, you know, that really hurts. So, you know, I'm here to not only plead for you to sign on from West Valley, but also, you know, I can be pushed for this on a national level and hopefully help on a, at least shifting the Overton window. Because again, this is a Dee Schneider here to tell you that pretty no-brainer, you know, argument. There's so many things that align. And I think this is a real expression of progressive values and conservative values, where we really are very opportunistic in a way that feedbacks into the human condition, you know, 10 times the amount of jobs, living wages, you know, make sure that we're actually treating our workers humanely in a system that's not just gonna discard them, in the same way that, you know, happens in Vernal. Anyway, my name is Joshua Cameron, I'm also a candidate for Utah's first. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Brayden Weeks.
Hello. So not to be too redundant with the last person, but thank you for taking this time and for considering this. So also speaking with the same subject. And I was kind of reflecting on it from the position of, you know, Utah as a whole, like rural Utah, where the Navajo Power Station, largest power station in the region, closed down. It's not sustainable to be a coal production any longer, so... I recently bought my aunt's house here in Hunter, so now resident here in West Valley and was really happy to learn about Utopia as I looked into that, seeing like the forward thinking that went along with that. And I'm hoping that with this renewable energy to net a zero impact is something that I think is forward thinking, like the Utopia project. And we, we as citizens of West Valley, I think, don't want to see us regress, don't want to see our economy hit. And I think that that's the way that we will go if we do not continue to look forward and we don't continue to progress and we continue to challenge ourselves, so... I just want to voice as a resident, new as I may be, that I really support moving towards this goal of 2030 netting a zero carbon emission for our energy production, so, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Alan Nauman.
Thank you very much, Alan Nauman. And I want to support the 411 as well. I've been in the solar industry for 10 years, now electric charging stations. So I love electricity and my industry, only some of my industry will make money on this project because Rocky Mountain Power, this is a Rocky Mountain Power-driven legislation. And you will still be able to do projects outside of this system, of course, through the other schedules which was mentioned. So there won't be strict, any way that you can still purchase solar individually or in commercial. But this we can do as a community will have a much bigger impact. And of course, it's an opt-out system. Before you spend money, before you have to spend money on a rate-making process, which pay lawyers to do all that, you'll have a rate after this negotiating process that you'll be able to say, can we live with this rate in the long term or not? And so you'll be able to opt out before you spend real money. And I expect that negotiation to go very well. And solar, the way that you can purchase solar today is so inexpensive that somebody mentioned two cents. This is the truth of it, 2.5 cents per kilowatt hour or less in the bigger projects versus, you know, three, four times that for other conventional fuels that are, that have a threat of a carbon tax and have the emissions issues attached with them, you know. People say, my concern is climate. Not everybody agrees with me that that is as big an issue as it is, but you don't have to. This is a financial win for Salt Lake City. One person mentioned in the work session that this was, there's no, there was no penalty by not opting in. But there is, there's a financial penalty if you don't opt in because your rates will be less if you opt into this, in my theory, in 20 years from now or over the course for your community over the next foreseeable decades. So this, because it's less expensive, not just clean. This is the best financial decision that the West Valley City can make, in my view. Also, deadline-driven is proof that it's a Rocky Mountain Power system. It's a short deadline. I don't like the deadline that quick either, because there'll only so many cities will opt in. We can't go to every city in four weeks to get everybody to do this, but you guys can. You guys and gals, you guys, you all can. And I hope that you do. And just wanted to make sure I covered everything I wanted to say. And I think it's a great idea, and you can opt out, is the bottom line. So please consider saying yes to for HB 411. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Jesse Cox.
Hi, and thank you. My name is Jesse and I'm a new resident. Been living here now with my wife since September. I just wanted to say what some of the others have already said and to say that I hope that we will get to HB 411 in West Valley City. And also, just kind of sketch the relationship of HB 411 to the challenges of the inland port authority and that it's become relevant now. The West Valley and Magna have been drawn into the project and that the issues overlap each other. So we have to, we have to see a future with quality of life, health issues. I'm sorry, I'm not a really good speaker. I have a lot of trouble filling my lungs with air because I have asthma. And I've just been living here now, my wife and I have been here a little over a year from Oregon coast. And we didn't expect, we didn't expect the winter inversion. We didn't expect the equality that Salt Lake City is known for. So there's a personal motivation as well and one that I empathize with a lot of residents of the Valley. So I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to voice my support.
Hey, thank you. Next, Representative Elizabeth White.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. I also wanted to speak to 411. I'm on the sitting committee that considered this and debated, heard the debate about it at the Capitol before it was passed. And one of the things that I was really impressed about in that process was hearing the potential for the process in the city discussions and the potential for involving information and engagement of all of the communities so that they were duly informed, but also kind of extra informed because it will affect everyone who is part of the community that signs on to this. So in the process of getting that information, the citizens get more informed and more involved in it. And I am finding myself more and more interested in citizen engagement and including student-citizen engagement. So as our kids in schools watch Mountview corridor cut through the last section of West Valley City on its way north and as they hear more and more about inland port and even the airport expansion, the prison that we know, some of us know and our kids are going to see evolve into more and more transportation issues and development issues in that way. To have the opportunity to look at renewable energy along with transportation development and see all of that as part of progress, development, evolution of what we go through in a city. Those are really exciting concepts for me to think about, involving the kids and their parents. So I'm excited about the prospect of passing a resolution for West Valley City to be involved in the discussion and the opportunity to develop renewable energy in West Valley with this 411. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Chris Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Welcome back, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Like the rest of the speakers today, I want to speak in favor of HB 411 and West Valley City passing a resolution to adopt clean energy standards by 2030. One of my favorite people, I'm gonna quote him, Carl Sagan, once said, "Anything else you're interested in is not going to happen if you can't breathe the air and drink the water. Don't sit this one out, do something. You are by accident of fate alive at an absolutely critical moment in the history of our planet." I think passing a resolution opens the door for opportunity. If we don't have this resolution passed, then that opportunity is gone. We cannot opt in after the end of the year. We can always opt out. And if you pass this resolution and some of the citizens don't like the higher rates, the cleaner electricity, they can opt out. This creates choice here in West Valley and here in Utah. It was spoken to earlier in the study meeting about trying to make sure that the new infrastructure of clean renewable energy is built in Utah. That is jobs in Utah, that is tax base in Utah. As coal plants around the country and here in the state are getting phased out in favor of cleaner energy, this creates jobs where jobs are being lost. So we can offset that difference. So far, 12 communities have already signed resolution or passed resolutions. We can be the 13th if we like. We're the second largest city in the state. And I think we have a duty to be a leader as one of the largest population bases here in the state. And I'm kind of ashamed that we're not in the first dozen to do this. And so I'm asking you to pass this resolution. If we don't like the terms later on, we can get out. If the citizens don't like it, they can get out and the city can stay in. Choice, jobs, and the environment. I have a seven-year-old daughter, she'll be eight next year. That means she'll be 18 in 2030. I want her to live in a valley that doesn't have as bad of inversions as we have right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We do have a few minutes left. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comment? Please come up. Give us your name and your address.
Hello. I'm a mayor and councilwoman and councilwoman. I'm Nancy Drosneck. I live in District 3. Do you know my full address? 3156 South Park Springs Drive, West Valley City, Utah, 84120. I just wanted to say that I hope we are, I'm 100% for renewable energy. And I hope you will take into consideration as a resident of the city that I think this is a great idea. I think I would agree with everyone that said what they had to say as well. The only thing I can add to that is perhaps if we could be a little mindful on when we take into consideration wind turbines, where we're going to place them. Hawaii is facing that problem right now. And they have the largest turbines in the entire nation, right where I grew up, right in the back of my home. And it's huge, it's dangerous, it's loud. So I'm sure if we do some really careful planning, we can place these things, which is very necessary, because I'm for that zero-carbon footprint and for our great city to be the leader for our state, if possible. But also with great planning, we can set these things in the most appropriate ways and that's not by residential areas. And to keep in mind of our wildlife as well. So that's all I just wanted to say, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Appreciate Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Buhler for taking care of that. We'll proceed forward, any comments from our city manager?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I think I'll make a comment tonight. So it's a little difficult to be in this position on the agenda because I end up as the policy implementer sometimes, maybe speaking a little out of turn, hopefully not from the policymakers who speak after me on the agenda. But in the instance of what we've been hearing from comments from the public tonight, I thought it might be helpful to outline a little bit what we've already been doing for the last decade, as well as maybe also make some comments just for the general public consumption, although the council's gonna be considering this later in other meetings anyway on our, at least what we know so far about House Bill 411. So first, in terms of what we were doing, there's no need to feel like we're following or we're not a leader or, you know, ashamed of efforts here in the city in this area. We have been making efforts in this area. By efforts, I don't mean planning or talking or considering or those sorts of efforts, although we've been doing those too. But real, actual investments and conversions and facility improvements and modifications, fleet level improvements, all those sorts of things. We've been doing that for 10 years. We've been doing LED conversion projects throughout our city facilities for, at least going back a decade as I spoke. We're actually looking at doing three or four more right now that are on large scale. Type projects like, for example, we're currently examining and will be bringing to the council fairly soon, the conversion of our whole streetlight system throughout the whole city. This isn't the first project like that that we've considered or done, and it won't be the last. We were the first city that I know of, although others have gotten the press. And this is the way it is a lot of times with West Valley City. We make improvements, we lead out, but we don't get the attention. We kind of do that on purpose in a lot of sense. We tend to be a little bit more conservative about being out front, at least from a PR or communication standpoint sometimes. And maybe that's not always good, but I have heard other cities or communities touted over the last year or two, or even the last few weeks for converting part of their fleets to hybrid energy, you know, lessen fuel consumption. We've done that with a major part of our police fleet 10 years ago. And continue, in fact, are switching over to more of those right now. As you remember, I think it was a week or two ago, the council adopted a resolution allowing us to move forward with purchasing our first actual pursuit vehicles that are hybrid vehicles. And built as pursuit models unlike, you know, some other communities that are unfortunately suffering a little bit of controversy over similar decisions like that. And the reason we've been able to do that and do that in a manner that isn't controversial is because we've done the background work and look and consultation and interdepartmental cooperation so we know what we're doing before we get into it. So I mentioned those examples as part of that discussion of, yes, we're looking at these things. We've been undertaking these efforts. I think some of the lessons that we've learned over those 10 years are that there is no accepted standard out there as of yet that we've been able to find that really provides a model for what is the best way to pursue this. And frankly, I don't think there is a defined model yet that is the best way to do that. So taking that experience into the consideration of House Bill 411 and to opt in or opt out in the various sentiments... in the various sentiments that were expressed here today and as the council will be considering them, some of them I've agreed wholeheartedly with and have experienced that and seen that proved out from a staff and a examination standpoint, and some I have not. Like, for example, I think one comment was made that adopting the resolution really just starts a conversation, right? And I agree with that, at least from what I've seen so far. If the council were to make that policy decision, the resolution really says nothing more than we have a goal of becoming a net-zero emissions community by 2030, right? I think that's a noble goal, and as somebody else said, there's no problem with shooting high, and we have done that before, and we're not afraid of doing that. And I actually appreciated those comments to say, hey, this is America, and we've done the impossible many times before in leadership positions. This shouldn't be any different way. On the other hand, the information that we've received so far about the actual steps, conditions, what will work, what won't, what are race structures looking like, what are the various parties that will be involved with this are so vague at this point that it really can't tell what we would be getting into. Now, that consideration is also sort of provided for by this one-year opt-in, opt-out position or period that we, in which we would hopefully learn what all these implications would be and what they would not. But, you know, we're going into this, we certainly would be making a clear-eyed recommendation to the council, and I know the council will make a clear-eyed policy decision. The other, only other comment I would make to that is, this is also, and I think somebody else out there in the audience said this as well, this is not an either-do-this-or-you're-shutout of any kind of program or policy that we decide would work better for us and the community as well. We're not. There are other ways to approach that same goal, which I think we should be able to as well. So with that, Mayor, let's all head.
Thank you. To the council, any comments? Perhaps I would add just a couple of comments, and that is, by concept, I think our council is very amenable to taking steps to improve our environment, even when sometimes those cost money. This particular proposal does not preclude any actions that we may take in the future. In fact, I suspect that we will take other actions in the future, maybe even along these lines. But the key to any good decision is having good information, and we do not have that at this point. And so that is a real concern, that we get good information, and I know our staff is going to be working on that. Deadlines imposed by other entities on us, and we get those often, every so often, to say, you have to do this by a certain deadline, and I say, we don't operate that way. What we operate on is we study issues, we gather the best information we can, whatever timeframe that is in, and then we make the best decision we can. And we take those decisions, general visions that the council sets, and our staff goes and to the great detail of evaluating, going through that, and then coming back and saying, here's what the information you need, here's what we can do. That process has worked well for us for many years, and I don't see a lot of reason to change that. I guess the council will decide if we do a resolution, but, you know, we just need more information, and we aren't going to have that in the timeframe that we're talking about. But I firmly believe that regardless of whether we adopt this resolution or whether we opt into the community collective, we are still going to move forward with issues related to clean energy, to responsible use of our resources, and in trying to make things green. We have advocates for that on our council who bring it to our attention repeatedly, which is a good thing. So regardless of how this particular one turns out, we're still on the right path. So that's that. Seeing no further comments, then we'll go to our public hearings. We first will consider, excuse me, Application SA 7, 2019, filed by Joanne Herbert. This is final plat approval for the FMC West Valley subdivision lot 2 at 4135 West Pioneer Parkway. Now, so that you understand what we're talking about, the Jordan Valley Hospital, the West Valley campus, right to the west of that is a parking lot. A building has been built there. They're going to separate that piece of ground into two pieces. They're actually going to build another facility there. And there is sufficient parking. They'll be adding some parking to the north so that there will still be parking available for everyone in the same quantity that is needed there. So the issue here is to break that into two pieces, and then at some point they will come back with a development agreement or, you know, what they're going to do there. And so that'll move forward. In this connection with this, we will consider ordinance 19-46, which is our actual document to vote on to determine whether we will support this or not. With that introduction, then, I will open it to public comment. Excuse me. I usually ask the council, any other things you want to make sure we highlight before public comment? Seeing none, then. Let's go to our public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Usually it only takes a few seconds for someone to decide that. Seeing no hands waving or no one standing up, we will close the public input on this particular proposal and bring it back to the council. Move for approval of ordinance 19-46. Second. Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to the next item on our agenda, which is also a public hearing, but this is to accept a justice assistance grant, or commonly referred to as JAG, through the U.S. Department of Justice Programs and Resolution 19-143. It's officially called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. We have received this grant a number of years in a row. It is put out there to assist police departments in specific areas of equipment, training, and certain programs where even can be used a little bit for salaries. This is a very strict formula and follows federal guidelines, so we've done this for a number of years, and so we will continue to do that. I think that's all that I'll mention on this, unless the council has anything to add. If not, we'll open this one now for public input. Is there anyone here to speak to this grant? Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion, bring it back to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-143.
Second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now for a number of other resolutions. These are not public hearings, but just items before the council. We have Resolution 19-144. This will authorize the purchase of five light vehicles from Young Ford. One Ford F-50, and then four Ford Police Interceptor Hybrid, emphasis on hybrid, SUVs from Young Ford. These are police interceptors. These four will be added to the previous 15, was it? No, it brings it to 15, I think. Yeah, a total now of 15, if this is approved. That cost will not, we put in here a limit of $193,000. These are replacing actually vehicles that have been damaged or totaled that are no longer usable, at least the four police interceptor SUVs, vehicles that were no longer able to be used. So we will purchase these, and I guess that's all I'll do for the introduction on that. To the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-144.
Second.
Properly forced. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 19-145. This is two sub-grant agreements with our city and Salt Lake County over a program that's referred to as the Utah, or the Home Investment Partnership Funding Program. Basically, this is $272,000. They are funds that are awarded for specific programs. There are basically two programs. One is for housing rehabilitation. Depending upon the circumstances of the individual, funds are either allocated to them as a grant or on a loan basis for them to repay, depending upon their financial situation at reduced rates or something along that line. There's also a second program, a down payment assistance program, which are grants towards the purchase of a home. There are specific requirements related to these, which we have, and these are things that the city has done in the past. These awards typically will come in about the same amount typically on, is it on an annual basis or two years?
No, we get an annual.
Annual, yeah. So that is the issue before us. Any further comments then or motions?
Move for approval of Resolution 19-145.
Second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have some new business as indicated on our agenda. However, for this part of the program, we need to convene ourselves as a board of canvassers relating to the municipal general election that was held November 5th of this year. Our purpose is to consider Resolution 19-146, which will, if passed, accept and approve the results of the election and the actual returns, if you will, by raise for each of the three council seats that were up for election. And it is part of our responsibility as a city to review and approve this, and election results are not final until we do that. So that is what is before us. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 19-146.
Second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now with that step, that's all official. The only thing that will have to happen is in the first part of January, those three individuals will need to be sworn into office. They'll continue out their term they were previously elected to, but that's the next step. With that, then, we go to our consent agenda. And this one is a little more straightforward than the one we have for next week. These are all right-of-way contracts and an underground right-of-way easement for property along, associated there on 3500 South with work that is being done on the Mountain View Corridor, but these relate to burying the power lines along that same corridor. We've had a number of these before. I don't think we're finished with them yet, because I know next week we have one on a project that I thought we'd already done them all. So we'll just keep doing them until we get everything taken care of. And so with that, we generally do these as a group unless the council determines otherwise. To the council. Move for approval of the four items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments beyond that? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. That then takes care of our regular city council meeting agenda, and we do not have a need for a closed session. We will officially adjourn this meeting in just a moment, but we do have a very special meeting right after this. And there it is, of the City Redevelopment Agency. And some important business we have to take care of there, but very brief, but that'll be done separately, so we'll adjourn this meeting with a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We are adjourned as a regular city council meeting.
At this point, then, I call a special, or a very special meeting, as the mayor said, of the redevelopment agency of West Valley City. We note that an opening ceremony and roll call has already been conducted, and all of our agency members are here. First item of business before us is the approval of minutes from our last RDA meeting on October 1st. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Move for approval of the minutes of October 1st.
Second.
All in favor of approving these minutes and accepting them, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are accepted. At this point, then, I'll introduce Resolution 19-14, which, if approved, will grant authorization to the city to designate a survey area to determine the feasibility of establishing a community reinvestment. That's what it is, CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, out in Lake Park area, Western Banker, Discover, Financial, Amazon, that area out there, which will allow them to do the survey, see if it's feasible and beneficial for the city, and to then designate that area as CRA. With that introduction, then, I'll turn the issues to the agency for any discussion and motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 19-14.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? I'll do this correctly this time. I'll turn it over to the recorder.
Actually, I would make one comment, just for public consumption. This is something that the city can ultimately, once we've done, gone through the process of adding another tool, that will help the city in its economic development. And these are legitimate tools that are authorized through state legislation, and it's just exciting to see this moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, agreed. Due diligence, it is a good thing, but I think that's important to put it out there. We're doing our research and survey and that, and making sure that's a good deal for us. Thank you. To the recorder for the vote.
Ms. Link.
Yes.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hume.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt.
Yes.
And Chairman Petis Manu.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go for the business. I'll entertain a final motion to adjourn. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.